Are we not live? I heard recording started. My heartbeat quickened.
Yes.
We good to go? All right. Here we are called to order and Kay, can you please take roll this evening?
Jay Engstrom is absent. Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
Jeff Davlin.
Here.
Nick Mission is absent.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Jared Mark is absent. Kate Giannetti is absent. Jess Robison.
Here.
Cindy Suplesio.
Thank you, Kay. Okay, moving on to our first item, looking at minutes from the August 10th meeting. Comments from that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve minutes.
Second.
Approval to Jess and Kim seconds. Thank you both. Next, public comment. Person's not on the agenda. We have a packed house tonight. Is any? So if you are not on the agenda now, yes, please state your name and please.
My name is Ross Cribs. I'm at 799 Garfield Avenue. And I'm here to bring your attention to the significant public turnout, as you may be aware, at Tuesday's trustee meeting, specifically pertaining to the proposed Forest Service redevelopment of their property. I want to preface all of this, as I did on Tuesday, and as most folks did, with a love of the Forest Service and all that they do, and a love of having them in town, and specifically having their employees in town as well. That said, three years ago, they unveiled, after no public interaction, they run the, right at the beginning of COVID, unveiled their plans at 90% design. I gave this letter, which I will share with you, to Kevin Wagner, the time, is that correct? The Soprus Ranger, District Ranger. The building itself, and again, I can show you some of the limited renderings they've given. But this is our new, I wish there was a way to show this. This is our new entrance to town. And it's really looking at the back of this building. It's a poor, a poor representation of our town. It's not the type of thing that we, the type of design in this orientation that should be on, that should be on Main Street. The main, the, the main entrance is not on Main Street. There's no main entrance facing Main Street. And, and the, the back of the building is what cars see. We just put a lot of effort into our turn, our roundabout. That is our entrance. That is our, our framed entrance into town. And, and this, this building does not do that. Just does not adequately represent our town, does not, not give us a good, a good first, a good first impression. That building orientation is something that, that I have a feeling someone else may address in, in a matter of minutes. There's no entry on Main Street. The comfort, the entry for visitors is super cumbersome as designed. You pull into a parking lot, you keep pulling around, do another 90, and then walk all the way around the building to the entrance on Went. That entrance itself is not visible from Main Street, except for about a four-degree angle because of the one tree that they are saving, which is the Christmas tree. Kudos to acknowledging that tree. How it may or may not survive the construction process is a, is a major concern. What that does lead to is the two other trees, the two other very tall spruce trees there, that are really an anchor to that part of town that are stated, slated for removal. This is not an appropriate design as is for this town or for Main Street. And it could be solved with a clever little approach. Again, I'm going to let someone else speak to that. I want to speak just a second to what you can do. I understand that this is federal land and is not under your purview. I also understand that there have been situations where folks have come for a complimentary, what's the, or a, a review from, from you to get your feedback. I'm asking that, that in light of them not doing that, that you at least look at, look at what they've, they've done, that they've done. Offer your guidance, maybe take a deep dive into a proposal that you're going to hear about shortly. And feel free to offer an official opinion from your, from your committee. I think if we are going to adhere to the values of our comp plan, of our UDC, of what we expect in one on Main Street, that it's in our best interest. It's not only about the trees, although I think in light of the fact that the pool is going to be knocking down a bunch of trees, and there's another shoe to drop there, I'm telling you now. That this, this, that someone has, someone has the opportunity to be a hero. They really do. Someone in a position of official representative power to be a hero and, and help make this change, this building that will make this a reasonable entrance to Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Hey, guys. Patty Lekt, glad you're here and thanks for being on the P and Z. So I'll do the, if you want to put it on there, yeah, that's good. So she's going, she's going to hang the, oh, yeah, on 2500 Highway 133. So, and she's putting the enhanced plan up. And so initially, what you've probably seen previously was the, we call it the initial plan from the Forest Service. And, and again, just to reiterate, we wish to enhance what they have for their sake and for ours. And so the initial plan, as you know, is parallel to Main Street. And, and there, it's abolishing the trees because it has to abide by zoning code to have it come to the sidewalk. And so I'll just keep going back and forth. So the enhanced plan was just rotated. I'll speak loudly so you can hear me. We still get on the recording. So we're still wanting to abide by that zoning desire. So what we've, we've rotated it so that now the entrance is going right onto Main Street and people can get to the building easily. And I'll be jumping back and forth with bullet points. So while I'm making this particular point, we realize that if the building's here, there is no demolition necessity because all of this can be occupied during the, the construction process and then can be utilized thereafter. And then at the leisure of the Forest Service, maybe in combination with the town, they might decide that they might want to do types of renovations. And I can attest to renovation process being plausible, no matter what. We had a little house in Aspen that you could take a marble from the front of the house and you could roll it to the back of the house. It was really in rough shape. It was one of those Sears and Roebuck houses. And it sold for $12 million in October. We were previously owners and so we were part of that process. But, but basically what I'm saying is the value of these things, because they exist, could be an amazing process. And then somebody had pointed out from the ecology perspective, that allowing these basements to stay for whatever they are won't disrupt any trees if by chance this plan might be accepted. And so, and then going back to the repositioning, the demolition costs much less because we're only removing Carmack Adam now as compared to the demolition costs of the other. And this, the cost increase is pretty incredible because now it's demolition costs, loss of the trees, replacement of the trees, the cost of if the trees don't make it, the new trees that they put on, you see. So we're, we're wanting to look, encourage the Forest Service to understand the financial gain that they, they will enjoy if by chance they adopt this perspective. And then simultaneously, because the pool's coming as well, there's a lot of trees that would come down with that. And we're hoping that positioning things and working together on the two adjacent properties might be cost-saving for everyone. For instance, if by chance the bulldozer is coming, you have to hire the bulldozer each time they come in. And if you get one bulldozer, you go, hey, we'd like you to do excavation of both sites simultaneously. Now the city gets to, you know, like share in the, the, the lessened cost of the demolition. I was paying attention to people whispering behind me. That's why I lost my place. Okay. So in any case, so you get the idea that if we do things collaboratively. And then as you guys have all heard, Susan Rea was wanting to introduce the idea of having a thermal, you know, sort of like, like geologic heating sort of source. And we're presuming that if the building were down here, but that doesn't mean we have to even engage with that at this moment. But it seems if they're close in proximity, it might be easier. We investigated the location of utilities and so on and realized that having the building in the new position won't cause any difficulty for bringing utilities to the site. And so we've been trying to do all that we can.
Wrap it up, please.
Oh, yeah.
Three-minute limit, just for special.
Sorry, that's great. And so does anybody have a question so that I could actually, okay, thanks for hearing that. And you can see I could just rattle on and on and on. Thank you. And then any questions you have, be in contact because we're here to serve the Forest Service, the trees, the community, the ecology. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your passion. I appreciate it. Any more comments on the Forest Service building this evening?
I have a copy of that. If you got any, if I had it or two.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Ross, to your comment, yes, I was, I watched that meeting online and it's a yes, very aware of the number of folks. The camera was shaking at the fullness of the, of the audience that night. Did you have comments as well?
Yes, please. My name is Candace Hart. I live at 1460 Main Street. I also have an office at 1370 Main Street. I'm an interior architect. I actually did not finish a graduate degree in Masters in Architecture. So I'm aware of zoning. Been working with architects for a long time and zoning and all of the above and knew where to living in Carbondale, but moved back to Carbondale in 2007. Before that, I was in Denver. Before that, I was, grew up in Aspen, part-time, and worked for architects up there before I moved to Denver. I'm honestly very confused at this process. We have over about a thousand signatures on petitions, both a change.org petition as well as a physical petition.
How many signatures you have?
Over a thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, every time we, we have a newspaper article or anything, we resend information and it goes back. We're, we're trying to work with representatives of state, higher up, to try to get help with this. We totally understand that US Forest Service doesn't have to go through the zoning department in Carbondale, which honestly, I think that is a problem that needs to be addressed. And I know everybody here is taking their time and energy and effort to do what's best for Carbondale. And I really appreciate that. So just start with that. And we really appreciate the Forest Service. So we're not looking to defy them or, you know, tell them what to do. But, you know, hey, can we slow down? Can we think about this, this town a little bit more thoroughly so that it's a win-win for everybody? So, you know, the, the timeline, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense when you fall, when you look at COVID. Throwing it out to pub, public on a first Friday in 2020, for people to just walk through, apparently wasn't recorded either. It doesn't make sense. You know, Chris Hasek said at the first meeting when we asked to get on the town meeting, so before last Tuesday, that, you know, Aspen probably wouldn't allow this. And, and why are we allowing this? I understand it's US federal properties and, and there's a lot of other conversation to be had and all of that. But what can we do to help you? What can we do to be a community working with the Forest Service? And not just saying, oh, it's the Forest Service, so they can do whatever they want because it's a piece of federal land. The history is actually very interesting because it was given to them to do and support our community. And then the community changed. You know, so, so then they gave Soprus Park, which was grazing land, to the community. So there's, there is this balance. And they said that in the meeting last Tuesday, that they did ask for community involvement to work with the city to do housing, and they didn't get anything. So I don't really know. I don't think it's important to go backwards. I think it's important in a new light and a new world to go forwards. So what can we do to work together? I'm happy to, you know, we were all giving time. There's about 10 of us that are doing it, but you saw what the turnout was. So I think that our town matters and that property, I think, was misunderstood from the, whoever did the, I think it was the historical commissioner, somebody here in the zoning department, somebody offered that if you want to be part of the historical corps, that you need to bring the building to the curb. And I don't know that, you know, but that where they brought it to the curb, right? Instead of like our proposal where it's off to the side and turned. I just think it's interesting and, you know, I don't know what we can do, but we are trying to get up higher and secure their funding because that's the most important piece here is that they don't lose their funding. We want them here. We want them to have their funding. We want them to have their building. But how, how can we improve on it? Can we, can we do it better?
Right.
Thank you. That's your clipboard. Look at that. Do you want me to sign this? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
All right. All right.
Only, only to say that we, we said that they are the community, so therefore you have power. People don't think that they do. Thank you for hearing that.
Great. Thank you so much, Patty. Thank you all three for showing up tonight and sharing that. I respect that comment. I'm just going to check in Jared around the current, and I know this is a big deal right now. There's a lot of opinions on it as far as this commission and its, you know, ability to do anything on this. Do you have any comments or input for us on that?
Sure. I was going to bring it up at the end of the meeting. So you know, the town doesn't have a location character extent process, which is a typical process that zoning codes and planning departments have to kind of review some of these aspects of a plan that deal with other agencies, whether it's special districts, states, federal governments, school districts, things along those lines. And so from a review process, the town doesn't really have anything in place to have any sort of formal review. The Forest Service started on this plan as was discussed Tuesday about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and slowly worked on it. They did check in with prior planning staff throughout that process. And the town, through the planning department, the public works department, and the building department did provide comments back as recently as, formal comments as recently as 2017, I believe, to the Forest Service. And a lot of those comments are reflected in this final design. Talking about bringing the building up towards Main Street, which is desired in the HCC, including more glazing along Main Street to have more public interaction so that the pedestrians walking by can see into the building, can see activity. I believe there was a recommendation to potentially flipping some of the internal uses. So more conference room and more community or public activated space is kind of fronting Main Street. You know, it was discussed and it was known for quite some time that, that the plan would remove trees. You know, I think it was just more recently that maybe the magnitude of those improvements kind of came to light. And, and I think that's what you heard Tuesday was a lot of that. But, you know, as far as what can, can this commission do? You know, all you can really do is forward some sort of sentiment to the Board of Trustees. Tuesday, the Board of Trustees made it abundantly clear that this was a listening session, that they invited the Forest Service to listen to comments from the public. But they weren't going to take any formal action at that meeting or have any definitive stance on the application. So you know, if this commission, similar to the Tree Board and similar to the Historic Preservation Board, wants to provide some sort of cohesive thought to the trustees, that, that would be what I think this board could do. And then it's up to the trustees to determine if they want to provide anything else.
Pursue the, a deeper conversation.
Correct.
Okay.
Pull a board. They have to pull a building permit from the town? Or is that even exempt? Is the Feds exempt from their permits?
I am not sure. I don't know that answer.
I was supposed to, the zoning department today asked for plans and they said, we don't have any plan. We don't have to do anything. It's US federal plan. But I don't understand that when it's on Main Street.
So I, I'm not surprised, you know, in a similar fashion to how school districts are exempt from local regulations, states are exempt from local regulations, you know, I'm sure they have their own permit review process to ensure that their buildings are built effectively and safely, but I don't think it is going to come through this community.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. And again, thank you for all showing up and bringing this to this commission. Appreciate your insight, your knowledge and sharing it.
A question about, not about this, but how, how does one, what are the, what are the rules about us stopping or scheduling a meeting where we get to have more than three minutes with anybody? How does that work? Or like talk, like talking?
Yep. Right. Anything else? Any other public comment? No. Okay. All right. So with that, I'll take a motion.
I don't, we don't need a motion to close the.
Okay.
We just move on to the next agenda item.
Okay. Great. All right. Next item on the agenda, 326 South Third Street approval documents.
So I will do my best Kelly impression. So at your last meeting, the plan, you really let yourself go. I appreciate that. At the, at your guys' last meeting, you've reviewed and approved a minor site plan for 326 South Third Street to build an ADU or a detached garage with an ADU above that. What's before you tonight is Resolution 3, Series of 2023, which brings forth your guys' conditions and findings of approval. So to formalize the, the approval, you guys would have to move to approve the resolution. We have included in the packet the findings of fact and the grant of conditional use permit as executed by staff, which was presented the last meeting, would be approved upon your guys' approval of the minor site plan. So I'd happily answer any questions you might have.
I was not here for this meeting, so I'm looking to all the four of you.
Was absent as well.
Okay. Summer fun in Carbondale.
You can still vote to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Even if you weren't at the hearing. The motion was made, and so this just reflects that motion being made.
So that, with that, unless there are anything, any concerns or comments, I will welcome a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 3, Series of 2023 for an accessory dwelling unit to be located at 326 South Third Street.
Awesome, Jess. Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. And vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all. Next, public hearing on the impervious lot coverage code text amendments. Here we have an awesome presentation.
I, I will walk us through this. So this is a notice public hearing. At your July 13th meeting, we held a work session to discuss the town's impervious lot coverage regulations, kind of surface some ideas, action items that staff can do to, to look at these regulations and potentially improve them. Some of the topics which were brought forth were potentially adding language that prevents stormwater flows from leaving a property. Looking at potentially modifying the definition of the term principal building. Determining if roof overhangs should be included in impervious lot area. Terminating how decks should be considered and consideration of green roofs and pedestal paver systems as pervious spaces. Ultimately, at that meeting, the Plan Zoning Commission directed staff to prepare two things, a simplified version of the code and one that per, that, that provided some additional clarity, context, regulations surrounding our existing code. And the Plan Zoning Commission did make a motion to initiate the code text amendment. So this was publicly noticed. It could be why Bob is here. It could not be why Bob is here, but you can speak to that.
You're wondering that, right?
So going through, we included a few items in, in the attachments. First, our existing regulations. I tried to pull anything that kind of was directly regulating impervious lot coverage or associated with it. So building coverage or principal building definitions, pervious definitions, things like that. I provided a draft red line of the UDC Section 3.8.5 with three options. I included some other jurisdictions regulations as they relate to impervious lot coverage. Aspen's Urban Runoff Management Plan, I only included the section that dealt with pervious pavers because it's a 400-page document that only an engineer could love. And the minutes from the last meeting, so kind of getting into the, the nuts and bolts of this. As I stated in the memo, Section 3.8.5 of the UDC largely defines how the town regulates impervious lot coverage. In addition, each zone district has a maximum impervious lot coverage requirement as a percentage of the total lot area. So in residential districts, that ranges anywhere from one and a half percent to 60%. Smaller, or the bigger the lot, the smaller the lot coverage, the smaller the lot, the maximum, or the larger the maximum lot coverage can be. In commercial zone districts, they're all as a flat percentage based on the district, and those range from 80% to 100% lot coverage. So when reviewing and applying these regulations over the last year, staff has identified a few areas of confusion where we think some clarity can be beneficial for our view and for the public who are making applications. First subsection A and B discuss various structure types, but they don't define how roof overhangs are addressed. That could be on purpose. That could be amiss. But what we've seen more recently with developments, especially out in RVR, are large roof overhangs to create more improved outdoor living areas. So you could have a large roof overhang that extends over a patio. And so just a question about how does the town of Carbondale want to address that situation? Could that, should that be impervious or continue to be pervious? The next subsections that, that have some confusion are with regard to the exemptions from impervious lot coverage. Subsection E sets forth a patio exemption. And it only pertains to impervious any, and I quote here, any impervious covered or uncovered deck and/or patio. And it's limited to 10% of the dwelling units floor area with an exclusion of the basement and garage. And so this language is a little confusing because it implies that a deck and potentially an uncovered deck should be counted as impervious if you're providing an exemption from the impervious lot coverage. But in the prior subsections A through D, decks aren't really discussed in any of those requirements. And so you know, we think some additional clarity on that could, could help with the application of that exemption. The second exemption is subsection F, and it relates to the pervious pavers. So this only applies to parking, driveway and walkways if a pervious system is used. The exemption is limited to 10% of the pervious surface required in the zoning. So the inverse of the maximum pervious. So a little weird, but we've gotten there. And the director is required to approve any manufactured pervious paving system. But our code doesn't provide any guidance on what that should be or what those minimum standards are. And so as the person applying that, often we'll just have someone come and say, well, we want to use these pavers. And the pavers use some term aqua or water or permeability. And then you look at the details and there's a impervious underlayment underneath it, or there's no gap between the pavers. And so we think some sort of clarity around that could help staff with applying that exemption. But probably even more importantly, could help an applicant provide a compliant product before they even submitted building permit. And so Um, product before they even submitted building permit, and so. When we review maximum impervious lot coverage, the vast majority of the time on single family homes. We get the, um, review after a building permit's been submitted. And so the applicant's already gone through, fully designed, they're structured, done structural. Plumbing, electrical, heating, spent a whole lot of money to get the development. Or the project where it needs to be to submit for a building permit. And then it comes to us to say, does this even meet our zoning code? And if we say, well, you're over on your impervious lot coverage. That can result in a few things, either, um, applicants just shrink a driveway. Or they remove a patio, or they have to redesign a house. And in that last situation, that can be very costly, time consuming, um. And so we think some of these clarities can really improve that interaction with the town and make. A more predictable outcome for an applicant. If they say, they see something that says, okay, this is either going to be. Regulated as impervious. Period, then they know how to deal with that, or if they say this can be calculated as pervious. But it has to meet these standards, then they know they have to go produce a product that meets that standard, so, um. We looked at a few other jurisdictions, um, and that's attachment C, um, and we found that the regulations. Very widely, um, generally speaking, um, there's some combination of. A lot coverage maximum, a floor area ratio. Or definitions of terms that really set forth those standards about what is impervious or pervious. Um, so starting with kind of the. Least regulatory Glenwood Springs. They have, um, an impervious surface calculation. But it only applies to infill residential development. And how their code defines infill residential development is a parcel that's undeveloped. That has a common lot line with at least two single family homes. And so they don't really apply. Their maximum, uh, impervious surface calculation very frequently in that town, um. The town of Avon, they regulate maximum pervious lot coverage as the. Area rendered impermeable by buildings compared to the total lot area, so patios, driveways, decks. None of that count, it's just buildings, so your primary building, accessory building, that's what is counted as impervious. Um, the town of Eagle uses both a maximum impervious lot coverage. Um, for buildings and a separate maximum impervious lot coverage for all other improvements, and so, um. They do include things like decks, patios, streets, driveways, parking lots. Other impervious materials and they just break it out into two categories, buildings at fifty percent. Other impervious at twenty percent as an example, um, and so that adds some, uh, clarity. The town of Basalt, um, uses a combination of maximum lot coverage and floor area ratio for residential developments. Um, and I couldn't find a definition, but when I talked to that, their staff, they said they generally apply it as. Your building footprints, your decks, your patios are included in that maximum area. But driveways aren't included in that maximum lot coverage, are not. Crested Butte also uses a combination of floor area ratio. And they use a required open space rather than a lot coverage, and essentially it's. It achieves the same goal, you either have required open space. Which can't be encumbered by impervious areas, or you have a maximum pervious coverage, um. So their open space definition limits, um. The impervious to structures above grade, that's what is, um. Everything else is captured as open space, however, decks eighteen inches or higher above grade. Count towards that structured area, so buildings, taller decks. Impervious, everything else pervious, um, and then we have the city of Aspen, so they use. A combination of floor ratio, floor area maximum, maximum site coverage, I'm sure there's other things that I missed. Um, but they have a more complicated and complex way of regulating, um. Lot coverage in two examples, our medium resident, or their medium density residential district. Has both a maximum site coverage and an FAR with additional square footage caps based on the size of the lot. So you kind of have to meet all three of those, um, items. Their low density residential district only uses the floor area ratio. And the maximum square footage cap to regulate that lot coverage, um. One thing that, that Jay brought up at the last, uh, work session was, um, the city's, city of Aspen's, um. Urban runoff management plan and how that treats, um. Permeable pavers, and so I pulled, um, section eight dot five dot one dot four. And they basically put their permeable pavers into three categories, they have modular block pavement. Cobblestone block pavement and reinforced grass pavement. Um, they have definitions, they have descriptions for each ones, but. Grass, think. Grass pave, you know, it looks like grass, but it has a surface underneath it. Cobblestones are obviously cobblestones, and then everything else is modular block pavement, um. And so they have different regulations for each type, but generally speaking, each type has, um. Design requirements and regulations that ensure permeability, so. Those include minimum void spaces, so the gaps between the pavers, um. Required fill material and subgrade material and size, subgrade depth. Um, they have design regulations that, um, deal with a whole host of, um. Best practices or minimum requirements for heated pavers, um, use of. Impermeable, um, treatments underneath and how the property would have to collect and drain. So they have a, a rather complex, but I thought some of the, um. Helpful regulations that I found in that really were these minimum void spaces, so for the modular. Blocks, it's twenty percent, for the cobblestones, it's eight percent, and then the grass doesn't require, um. Any minimum void space, and then they have a recommended. Um, minimum of twelve inches of subgrade material to resist against freeze thaw situations that are experienced in Aspen, so. You know, I felt that those types of regulations could be helpful. In Carbondale if we wanted to add some more clarity around what those permeable pavers could be. So kind of getting to the, the, what, what we worked up is we created three options, so the first option, and this is. You can see these on, um. Page thirty-three, thirty-four of, um, the packet. But the first option is that very simplistic option, so, um. We've removed both of the exemptions. We added some additional clarity to subsections A and B. To discuss how roof overhangs greater than two feet would be addressed, they'd be included in. Um, impervious lot coverage, and then we, um, added a new subsection E. That better defines how decks and patios are considered impervious, and so that talks about. The materiality and the finish of the deck and patio as well as what's underneath it being impervious, um. Option, a- and so, you know, I think the result of this is it would be. Very simplified, it'd be very easy to understand what is impervious and what is pervious. I think the, the drawback to this option is, um. It's going to impact. How much development can occur on a lot? And it is going to have a negative impact because more areas are going to be considered impervious than what's today. Um, for example, those decks, patios and large roof overhangs, um. And then removing the exemptions will also have that negative impact, those are pretty widely used. Um, to kind of. Increase the amount of floor area that's developed on a property. Um, it's not typically a trade off of other site improvements, it's typically, uh, maximizing the floor area, so. Um, the second option kind of. Tries to find a little bit of a middle ground, so it keeps those same, um. Proposed changes from option one, um, with A and B including the conversation about roof overhangs, large roof overhangs. Um, and subsection E to better define how decks and patios are considered impervious. But it keeps, um, option two, or in option two, we keep the pervious paver exemption. No, excuse me, we keep the deck and patio exemption and we remove the pervious paver exemption. So every project gets a ten percent. Exemption of all decks and patio spaces that are impervious. And just allows that to go directly to their maximum lot coverage. But we don't deal with the pervious pavers, if you want the design of a pervious paver driveway because you want to do that, that's great. But we're just going to consider all driveways impervious in this option. Um, so similar to option one, it's going to add clarity, I think it will, um. Improve applications, reviews, expectations. But it will also still have that negative impact on the amount of development, although it would be less than, um. Option one, by still having that, um, deck and patio exemption. And then option three, um, still provides some of the clarity, so, um, it's still. Includes the new subsection E about decks and patios, still talks about the increased, um, or the large roof overhangs. But it keeps both of the, um. Exemptions in place, the only change the exemption is adding some additional clarity. Regarding pervious pavement systems, and so it tries to pull from the city of Aspen's. Um, regulations to add some minimum void space. Some recommendations or requirements on minimum, um, depth of subgrade, and then, um. Limiting some of the impervious, um, treatments underneath that to, to provide some additional clarity and. You know, like the other ones, this will still have an impact on development, but it'll be significantly less. Um, I think by and large, most roof overhangs are within that two foot range. I don't think we have a wide, a, an overwhelming amount of development that, that. Includes four foot roof overhangs is kind of a common roof overhang. And so this would really address kind of those large. Roofs over decks, those large roofs over patios that are really intended for. Impervious outdoor living space, um, so tha- that's kind of the three options, um. And so we're presenting these, we know this is really kind of a first look at it, so. We're not expecting, um, recommended motion of approval on anything, we really want to get some feedback. Hear from the public if they have anything to say about this, and then work with the planning commission to maybe. Pursue one of these options or two of these options, maybe add some additional clarity that could, um. Could help improve these regulations, and so we are recommending that we get some feedback, we have an open conversation. And then that, um, the Planning Zoning Commission continue the public hearing to a future date. I put in, um, September fourteenth, which is the next regular planning commission meeting, but based on what we hear tonight. We could ask that that go a little further out so that we have additional time to prepare some. Different code language, so, um. That's all I really have, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have on this, um.
Nice work.
Thanks.
That was, yeah. A lot of good perspective, I, I appreciated, uh, your precedent research, thank you. Bob, is this why you're here tonight? Candace, do you have any further comments? We're done, okay. Oh, do we have a fish on a hook?
I would ask that you officially open the public hearing.
Oh, yes, uh, yes, um, can we open the public hearing?
I can wait.
It's open.
I am Bob Schultz, three, five, four, Font Drive, I live outside of town boundaries, uh, do local planning work. And, um. I guess mine would be, uh, alternative D, um. I really think that, uh, the code historically has been interpreted in the same way. With regard to, uh, impervious that. The outside of the building, there's even language that talks about measuring floor area, the outside of the walls, so. I think this phenomenon that we're running into, uh, is interesting, but I, I think, uh. Particularly on the south side of buildings, I want big overhangs, I want them to block the summer sun as a passive, uh. Strategy and. I think if we put two feet out there, we're going to get two feet overhangs in situations where we need three or four feet. Uh, in order to keep the house a little cooler. So I, I would stick with, it's the outside walls of the, uh, building, um. The next end agenda item you're going to be talking about is ADU, and over the last, uh, ten years. We've been shrinking the, uh, buildable space. And I think it's been, uh, just sort of evolved. Uh, a couple of building officials ago, a gravel driveway was considered to be pervious. And then a, a building official came along who said, I'm not going to interpret that as, uh, as pervious anymore. That shrunk the buildable space. The, I think what you just approved a while ago was Jay Ray's property, is that right? Hit, that project couldn't have happened with the changes that we're talking about, it's my understanding at least. I had lunch with him when he was putting this plan together, and he was looking for every foot he could. Uh, to try and make his impervious, uh. Work within the forty percent requirement, uh, so I, I, uh, I think in terms of ADUs. That we're. Heading in opposite directions, uh, we're reducing the ability to do it, we're required two parking spaces for every AD, ADU. Look at how much of a lot that is for the, uh, parking and the access to, to the parking that all is going to be counted. As impervious space. The, the patio, uh, exemption. To me, there, the deck definition, uh, talks about having, uh, pervious, uh. Underneath the deck and the ability to water to get through. That doesn't seem like a bad idea to me, if you have a two thousand square foot house, you can have a two hundred square foot deck. And, um, have it be pervious underneath the deck. If somebody has one of those big overhang things and they have flagstone or concrete or whatever, that's going to be. Counted as impervious because of that, uh, regardless of whether it has a roof on it or not. Uh, patios, uh, that are, uh, impervious or impervious space. I don't really, uh, my information on pervious papers is not current. Uh, I gave up on them a while back, and so I, until somebody gives me better information, I tell my clients they don't work here. And they're very high maintenance, and to do them right and to make them actually work. You have to maintain these to keep the ability of the water to penetrate, and we have these freeze thaw cycles and. Nicholas probably has newer and better information than I. But they're one of those ideas that I got really excited about, and then when I saw it in practice, I went. Okay, this is meant for Florida and, uh, and, you know, North Carolina. And places that get a lot of rain in Seattle and, uh, don't have as big of a, uh, a winter as, as we have, but. I don't really have a dog in, in that fight of how you deal with, uh, pervious papers, so anyways, those are my thoughts. And, uh, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anybody on the Zoom call? No. Is there someone?
No. Just me.
Okay. Um, with that, should we, can we close public meetings? And looking at you four. Thoughts, comments?
We do need a motion to close the public.
Yeah, it's all right.
We have to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I mean, he's closed. All right. Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
There's a question. To staff, uh Jared, the interpretation of these. I think option one and option two are. Identical for section E, covered decks and patios. So covered decks and patios, uncovered decks and patios, extending over impervious surface. And decks and patios which are made from an impervious material would be impervious. It seems to leave open decks and patios which are constructed with some type of pervious material. Oh, a wood or a Trex deck with gaps would then be considered a pervious deck?
Yep.
And that would, is it true then that that would not? Or that would be an exemption not um. Not to be counted with that ten percent. So it could be a big pervious deck.
Yep, you could have in theory a. Five hundred, fifteen hundred square foot deck that's. A traditional wood deck or Trex stack with grass underneath it and it's going to be. Counted as pervious. And so it wouldn't hit against this, I think. You know, the intent of of E was really to say, if it's truly. A pervious or if it's truly an impervious deck, a solid deck, or it's over some sort of impervious area, then that needs to count. As impervious lot coverage, not pervious lot coverage.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, we have seen, we have seen some applications um. Where the material uh materiality under the deck is impervious and. Um, applicants have been confused as to why we're counting that as impervious area.
I just want to make sure I was reading that correctly. And then I also want to ask. Um, in the overhangs in excess of two feet, so if there's an overhang. Less than two feet, you take the measure from the outside wall. Only when you have an overhang in excess of two feet, do you start measuring from the extent of the overhang?
Cor- correct. So I think the intent and and I'll be frank, I picked two feet as a. Random number. If it's three, four, five, I think really the intent is. If someone's building a fifteen foot long. Roof over whatever with posts out there, that that portion be counted as. Impervious because it's largely blocking the ability for. Rain to permeate into or snow to permeate into the ground underneath it. Um, and so. If it's. Less than two feet, we would go from the outside wall, but if it's. You know, a ten by fifteen foot roof overhang, we would. Count that entire ten by fifteen area towards impervious.
Thanks. Jess?
Have a question. Um, parking areas and driveways regardless of surface materials. If we are counting dirt under a deck as in as pervious. Why do we then count driveways made of gravel? As impervious when it's exactly the same reasoning that we're counting it as pervious on a deck?
So um, I think Bob kind of answered that to a degree. Um, I I think there was an interpretation from prior um staff that said. Parking and driveway areas get a lot of use and get a lot of compaction. And therefore, after a while, regardless of the surface. Water tends to sheet flow off of it rather than soak into it. And so I think there was a consideration that just a. Driveway and parking area period is impervious with the exception of this. Pervious exemption, pervious paver exemption. So um.
We talked about in the working group too, like you could get road base down. And put a pervious paver on top of the road base, but after compaction, there there is no permeability of that combination. Of pervious paver over a road base or gravel.
Mm hmm. And and so I think that's what we're seeing and that. That point is kind of what we're seeing in some of these pervious paver applications where. It's road base or it's highly compacted or it's recycled. Millings and then they put a pervious paver on top of it. And I think the concern is, is that truly? Pervious or is it not pervious? So I tha- I think that's where the driveway, regardless of surface material, came from, Jess.
Thanks.
Um, Cindy? What jumps out at you in this?
And three, I think we just have to be careful about the materials. I know that's what Aspen uses. I still think there's a lot of materials out there. That we don't even know about or would come to us. It would be. You wouldn't necessarily want to turn them down just because we don't have them on the listed.
Right. Jared, in any of your research, did you, did you check in on um permeable concrete? Made a lot of strides in recent years.
I I did not, and I think that um. Illuminates the ever changing and fast changing world of. Permeable applications. And I. And I think where where we as staff kind of get a little. Gun shy is not all systems are created equal. Um, and without having some sort of. Metric that we can rely against, it's really hard for us to stay current in the space and say. Yep, this is permeable or this isn't permeable. So no, we we didn't look at that.
And it it's tough. Uh. You know, to your point, Cindy, it's, you know. I think advancements, technological advancements in building products. Are escalating quickly these days um for many reasons. And it would be, I think. So for any of us to expect staff, especially in a small town, to be up on, you know, a product level uh like that. Um, so it's 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 interesting to think about in in terms of this, how, you know. Is there a way to keep it simple? Is there a way to kind of maybe even kind of keep it common sense, dare I say? While still allowing for technology to advance in a way that doesn't put an onus on staff. Every single time. Um, but somehow, you know, requires the homeowner and or builder, you know, if they want to bring a. Cutting edge product, you know, they almost all, you know, almost like, you know, via spec sheets or per you don't provide percolation rates. Um, maybe there's something there to that. But anyways, um, Kim, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm a little bit hung up on what Jess was saying in the same uh respect. As far as what's under the deck versus um road base. Being considered impermeable. I've got a lot of that stuff around my little tiny house and. The moisture's not rolling off of it, you know, it's, so that's interesting to me. It feels like a double standard a little bit. Uh, the deck versus the. You know, with the dirt under it versus the road base. So um. And I agree with you a hundred percent that there's got to be some way to figure out this paver thing where. It can stand the test of time if we can figure out what the metric is that someone needs to come to us with and. Show us with these different products because there's no way that you're going to be able to stay abreast of all of those.
No, definitely not. When I think to Jeff's point earlier, um, we also can't be responsible or have staff can't hold. To certain degree. People responsible for improper construction techniques.
Right.
Right? Um, and permeability, a permeable paper on crusher fines. Well, with the right strata and compaction of that, of the stratas will perk. And so that's what it was designed for. It's what we, why we use it. In in landscape, you know, in in urban construction. Um. And yet it does fail because it's it was it's done haphazardly. It isn't, you know, it's 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 for a myriad of reasons. So. Um. It's a tough one. And I mean. Is there a sense of somehow keeping this simple? Um, to me. I I come from kind of an old school perspective. I, you know, Bobby, your first point, I I appreciate the outsides of a building. You know, as as far as, you know, an overhang has a lot of different functions to it. And I I think when water, we can, we can move water, we can allow, we know that space is there to to receive water. I think we also design buildings to keep water away. So, you know, um, you know, probably slopes on the outside of a building are going to do more or less than an overhang well. Um, as far as receiving water or if there's. An intention to receive water in those areas and move it via. A a French drain or something of that sort, then those kinds of things could be in place as well. Um. As far as some language here, to me, a deck traditionally. Means a deck, a wooden deck where it is, does have slats. It does allow for melt and and precipitation to to pass through at a patio is more of a hardscape element. Um. I've always thought of them like that. That language helps to find them for me. Um, but yeah, I know. As the years move on, we come from different places, you know. Some places everything's a deck, some places everything's a patio. That can just be a vernacular, like kind of a language or vernacular kind of pitch. Um. Maybe we can do some defining there, like that might be able to help us. In some of these, if if we need to kind of. Easily identify some of these areas, which may or may not be permeable. Um, yes, Cindy?
Just in one and two, I mean, in option one and two, both of those and probably. We are taking the parking area and driveways out regardless of surface materials. So we're saying, even if it's concrete pavement, right? We're no longer counting it.
No, so in both of those options, those are still counted as.
Impervious, okay.
Regardless.
Material. So at that, when we had our kind of discussion before, we talked about.
So.
Taking the driveways out.
And and we could, you know, I I didn't want to go too far down every rabbit hole. So I figured if I at least.
Yeah.
Brought a few options, we could. You know. Work, work on one of those or the other, but um. To to Nick's point, I think there is a certain appreciation simplicity of. Say what Avon does or um Crestabute does where it's it's the structure. And it's the structures that are impervious. It's the outbuildings that are impervious and. They're not as concerned about all the other lot. Accoutrements, if you will, whether it's a driveway, you need to access your lot somehow and um. Sometimes it requires a very extensive driveway to get to the buildable area. Um, sometimes it requires no driveway. Um, and so, you know, I think there is a certain appreciation of the simplicity of that.
Yeah, I mean. We're often, you know, a company's often asked to provide like a a permeable map for a project. And what that would look like is there is clearly permeable. So say a garden bed, a lawn. A a gravel walkway of some sort or driveway. And then there are structures. Uh, to the outside wall. Um, there are concrete, so sidewalks. Uh, actually sidewalks would count as permeable because they would shed into a. Uh, a pervious area, but a driveway would likely not. A parking area would would not count. It would be impermeable. Unless there was an associated spec on the product that passed. So in my mind, that's one of three colors. If we were to be very basic, you know, there's there's the whatever color would be like a heat map. You know, whatever color would be used for permeable zones. Clearly, color for impermeable zones, clearly. And then this this gray area that an applicant would have to provide some sort of information on. But to clearly identify and that it would be at the kind of the 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 plan review level perhaps where it's. You know, it's it's identified as this is an area of kind of for discussion. Either way, I think, you know, some staff would be reviewing this, you know, kind of saying, hey, you, you're calling this this concrete driveway permeable. Can you, can you help us understand that? So there there still has to be a bit of kind of thoughtful review on it. That's just, that's just been my experience with, it feels um. I think the most realistic in kind of in the real world sense, um, from what my hands have touched. Um, while also being kind of common sense and and somewhat uh clear to understand. I don't know, I don't know much that much that helps, but. I kind of go back to where Jesse were earlier, like, you know, permeable is permeable and sometimes we don't really like it or it doesn't, you know, but it. At some point, everything's going to surface flow. If 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 we have the next monsoon, it doesn't, I don't. You know, the moment, you know, how amazing your topsoil is, it you you will have surface flow.
I was just thinking like a an a lawn that becomes completely not maintained. Becomes essentially impermeable. Um, so and we can't control that. So. I'm pretty old school too. I think it should be outside walls. Period. Um, especially because. Building technologies change, like the ten years down the road, five years down the road, there could be some cool trend that comes out that is. Dealing with solar or solar gain or whatever. I I mean, I can't predict it. I'm I'm shocked all the time at what's out there and what architects are doing and what designers are doing. I like Avon's way, like it's the structure. I think that um. We talk all the time about how we, there's this balance between more parking, having enough parking and. Not requiring parking in order to create more housing, which is what we keep talking about. And. I think that. A gravel driveway is a gravel driveway. Like I, you know, I think that if it's concrete, it's concrete, makes sense. I agree sidewalks generally, if they're done right, shed onto permeable surfaces. So. When I think of keeping it simple. I think of. Outside walls. Period. What are the structures on the site? And and that's it.
So we use a period outside water, outside walls period. So. Twenty foot wide concrete driveway that sheds into the street system. Is that, how does that count?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't count it.
So that that would not, that would, that would not be. So you'd be, you'd say that's in, that's pervious.
Yeah, yeah. I think it should just be the structure.
Okay.
Because also. Speaking from my own experience, a a gravel driveway eventually. Like I would lean toward putting asphalt in a situation like that because it it. There's weeds growing as tall as the house sometimes. At my house sometimes. So like you, there's this like fine line between like. What it looks like and. Same with a lawn, you know, not taking care of your lawn. I just think simple is better. And. I don't want to be Aspen with definitions of pervious pavers and pervious concrete and. I just, I just think that that's overkill.
Okay.
I would. I would um. Question whether. Excluding driveways. From this impervious standard is gonna. Have a really bad outcome in places like. RVR if there's no. Other restrictions are our places in their design code, like how big will a driveway get and how many cars would it be designed to accommodate? If there wasn't something restricting the size of the driveway like uh, like an impervious standard. I don't know what the application of it is, but I mean, we've, I've at least seen those driveways. Um, incorporate other materials so that they can meet the standard. Uh, so I think that people are going to push the limits. And if you allow them to build a twenty thousand square foot driveway, they probably will.
Actually, if I can flip that for one second and but stay on that kind of that in that vein. What if it's a small lot in town or in, let's say, a new development in town, a new cul-de-sac? With very small lots. All the lots are facing to the same cul-de-sac. They all have massively large driveways. Uh, because it's it's of this style where we're maybe duplexes where the really the front of the house is just garage. And the driveway goes all the way from building edge to building edge, and there's a four foot walkway around the house. And you have, let's say, I don't know, a dozen of these homes. And they're all shedding water into the same, so my point is, the very small lot. That now can use all driveway and then say it's not permeable. Or it that it is permeable, so it doesn't count, and they maximize it for parking. Um, that could turn into a stormwater issue. Because that will shed, and then it'll start moving, because we, you know, our stormwater, if we don't really, we just do curb flow. In Carbondale. I wonder if that could turn into an issue in more of the core, not so much in more of our peri-urban areas.
Yeah, in the working group, it's kind of where we started, like in just understanding the why. Of um, impervious restrictions and it's, I mean, stormwater. Is.
Yeah.
One of the bigger reasons, so that you don't put the onus on your neighbor, so that you don't put your the onus on the right away or on the town, so.
And in doing those plans, you know, for communities, it's just what we find too, yeah, I mean, it stacks up pretty quick, you know, we, you know, you send a deluge. From your neighborhood into one neighborhood, and all of a sudden they're overtaken. And they can't meet theirs, you know, it stacks up pretty quickly, um, especially knowing how our elevations are. Given our adjacent seas to rivers and and so.
Good question. Um, Jared, did you? Use this. When you were in Avon, was that part of your. World? Did you use this? How how did it work?
He's like, I wrote.
Did you feel like it was? Just curious, I.
I I did not write it. But um, no, you know. It it had, like with all of these codes, it's going to have situations where it works great and situations where it's really misses the boat, and so. You know, Avon had um, a valley floor where largely lots had. Higher lot coverage ratios, and then it had kind of a mountain hillside community where it had. Smaller twenty, twenty-five percent lot coverage. Um, and so in those. Mountainside developments, you would tend to find your homes would be built at. Twenty-four point eight percent lot coverage, and then you could have a. You know. Football field length winding driveway to get them up or down based on grades to. The buildable area on the lot, and so, you know, the effective lock coverage was significantly higher when you consider some of those. Driveways and runoffs, but you know, the the building worked in more of the urban core where it was higher density. You know, it worked pretty well because that tended to be more multifamily structures, and so your lot coverage tended to be. Your buildings and then the parking kind of restricted. How much building you could really get on, and so, you know, it it worked well in those, but you know, I certainly think. The. The threat to that was just the 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 massive driveway situations, but I think to to Jeff and and Nick's point. What we found there was whatever that maximum was. People were going to build to that maximum with. Their building, and I'm seeing the same situations here in in Carbondale, you know, especially in RVR where. Lot values are so high, people are building as much home as they can possibly build. So, you know, I think it is worth considering if you. Remove all of these other exemptions and it's just the building footprint, you know, that is a. Lot, potentially a large net increase in. Structure that can be built on a site, and you know, the. The other aspect of lot coverage is, one. How does it deal with water and drainage and all that, and the other is, how does it control? The structures that are being built. Um, and so it kind of has that dual role in in zoning codes, so um. Just something to keep in mind as you guys ponder this. A fifty percent lock coverage on a. Five, you know, on a ten thousand square foot home is a five thousand square foot building footprint and. Did I say that or did I mess it up? Ten thousand square foot lot, five thousand square foot building footprint. You know, potentially a ten thousand square foot home if you go two stories, so just very simple math, doesn't really consider. All the other things, but. Food for thought. I know Jay kind of brought this up a little bit last time. The idea of. How does? A landowner, any kind of project in their ability to accommodate stormwater on their site. How could that impact this? So to go back to this idea of of the the football field driveway. That nice, that that winds on forever. Now, I'm, now, there are, there are environmental costs for that, of course, we won't get into that. Um, but if if we all want to keep it into the box that we're talking about right now. It's a lot of impervious coverage. But. I look at that and I say that person can deal with that on their lot, you know, they can push it off and they can, actually, they they probably want it other places. Because you don't want weeds growing by your driveway, maybe you you take it and you and you run it out um somewhere else. Into the lot. So there, I actually, I actually don't, you know, I I could see that that would maybe not be as big of an issue. A smaller lot, you know, there are opportunities to be creative and to use. You know, good, you know, kind of thoughtful systems to take the water and do things with it. And how do we feel about that I, just the idea of accommodating, you know, kind of good neighbor policy, you know? You take care of it, it's on your lot. How do, how does that play out for you? As long as you aren't sending the the deluge downstream or into your neighbor's yard or. Into your own basement, for that matter. Or into a ditch, your town ditch or a waterway, untreated water, it's fully sedimented or. Perhaps, you know, with chemicals. Well, saying, do we, do we, do we allow for that? Do we consider that? There is, again, I'm not trying to get complicated, but that, but to me, there's that, that's actually a simple thing. You know, if you can take care of your lot, if you can maintain what occurs on your lot. And I'm not saying that you should be able to have a full slab from lot line to lot line, don't get me wrong here. But is, but there's something to be, you know, I just want to throw this one out there, and before we're getting into like any kind of deep numbers, um, just conceptually. Um, a landowner, um, its ability. To accommodate their their storm needs and then their, you know, the ability of. You know. Yeah, I'll leave it there. They make sense.
Just because you tell them they need to accommodate it, doesn't mean they will in the correct.
Well, you could write it into the code.
Well, it would have to, it would have to pass through design, if you pass through like.
It'd have to be an approved.
In the code, like.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you said something, I don't want to throw out numbers, but you have to, your design has to accommodate a twenty-five year, one hour storm event. So demonstrate to us how this much water on this lot will be addressed on this lot. Yeah. I'm I'm kind of, so I'm so, like, yeah, the example would be a multifamily, you know, a multifamily scenario. Where a detention pond on site. Uh, simultaneously functions as a soccer field for the kids. And provides this multi beneficial value. But the thirty days out of the year where we get. Deluge type events. It functions, they accommodate it, it percolates, either a retention or detention pond. And then. You know, they they have taken care of of that. That need or that that kind of that that ownership challenge. I guess what I'm thinking of, what I've dealt with in other communities.
We don't have stormwater regulations for residential zones, correct?
No, we don't, we do not.
You do have stormwater regulations for commercial zones?
I believe so. Yes. What Nick said.
Seems like an important distinction. I don't know.
I don't know, I don't mean to wander, but to me, they're they're so strategically connected that like the idea of like, you know. Allowing earth to receive water versus shedding it and putting it is is really the idea of like, are we putting it on somebody else? In some other way, or are we putting it on the larger town government in some way? Or is it, you know, is are we all working together kind of, oh, you know, in more of a network approach to the challenge? It starts little with these ideas of decks, pavers, you know. That kind of, but it it really, in my mind anyways, works up. Pretty quickly.
So is there a way to have? A table. Where depending on lot size, that's where. But I feel like that would address it.
We have the table based on. Lot size.
But simplify the rest of it.
What's that?
Simplify the rest of it. Where you you simple, simplify it to out outside walls and or. You know. Driveways made of concrete or something like that.
Yeah, I would almost prefer that method of like, if we wanted to allow for bigger driveways, we just reduce the percentage of. Impervious lot coverage rather than deal with it in exemptions, but.
Yeah.
That doesn't modify what I think about like human nature being, they're gonna, people are going to build to whatever limits you give them. And in our work session, at least, the Jay's engineering perspective was the fifty fifty, most of the residential lots are. Fifty percent impervious, fifty percent pervious, and everyone seemed to be okay with that as a standard, and I noticed that. You didn't, you didn't do any of the work. Or recommend any of those percentages changing, or say, just dealing with some of the exemptions that makes applying. The rules. Complex or arduous.
Yeah, it seems like you could find a middle ground where you. Have the table and you have. This is how we measure the bill, the principal building. And eliminate the other stuff.
Well, then, are you then saying that you would increase the percentage of impervious? Because you're only considering.
Depends on the lot size.
Right, but if you like, you wanted driveways to be out of the.
I would.
calculation.
I would say that. I could be convinced that driveways should be included in the calculation if they're not. Gravel. Or like.
Permeable.
Yeah. So like the the part of the driveway that's concrete is included. And the building. So like, there's a middle ground.
Right, so if you have a gravel.
You have, yeah, where you, yes.
Extra parking area.
That doesn't count.
So we state that you would state the driveway, the type of material the driveway is made out of. You say if it's gravel. Versus. Concrete or. Road base, would you?
Yeah, I don't know what the words, because that that can get really gray to.
We're getting into constructability at that point.
Yes.
It's dicey. Um, and I have one more creative stick to put in the spokes. What about a driveway that intentionally is impermeable? Impervious, but collects water and puts it into a rain garden sequence or a treatment train. You know, where there's like an intentional collection and and conveyance system that is put in place. And it's very important to have a a pan, a pan and conveyance component. As part of that. Is that? Makes sense, now, so again, we've, I've been part of these, you know. Pro, uh, projects that have actually been, I think, really creative and really kind of. I think really positive. At first, you'd be like, well, there's, there's a lot of pavement there, it's like, yeah, like. That's the catch, that's the catch base, and we know it's always going to be there, and it's going to move water into a system exactly the way we want it. And again, that goes to this earlier comment of, because those projects take care of it all on site. I think there's actually a really positive ethic in that. So with that, I actually, I want to put out the idea of. This is not complicated, hopefully don't have any Bob.
But I was looking.
If I, if I could, it's quickly. Is it two simple columns? Is it one where it's, if you take, if you're taking care of your stormwater on site, if you are accommodating your needs. That is one path, and the other path is a percentage. We look at outside walls, we look at impervious for first perme- permeable, and we say. Okay, you know, this is, these are your percentages, you're in this track. Or you're over here, you're claiming you're going to accommodate everything and you're going to.
Yeah, it's almost like you're triggering a stormwater regulation for lots that have over fifty percent impervious coverage. It sounds like not the simple, the simple track, I appreciate the conversation, and I've seen some of the designs. It just feels like they're mostly focused on stormwater control rather than. Restrictions on the open space of a residential lot.
It's fair, it's fair, yeah.
But I don't know, that's interesting, I mean, if we're looking for exemptions. Or if we're, if our goal is to allow for more parking area. Then I think that's an interesting strategy.
Or more density, right?
So.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, in the building structure, I can see that. I'm. I'm hung up on.
I guess the next thing we have touched on is, it's green roofs. Please, yeah, come on to the mic, yeah.
Hand is hard again, um, as exactly as you're speaking is. The future is moving towards gray water homes. Capturing water all over the home, inside, outside. So. In simplicity, because I read your, I read the codes and have to follow them. Is what about the future where we're going? And and wanting, so if you have a green roof or. You've thought about it a better way. Is there, is there, because, uh, for instance, in Aspen, if you have snow melt. You pay for it. If you have solar panels, you get credit. So something. In that simplicity.
Bob, yeah.
The places where you and I work, where we do these complicated things. That's your entire planning staff.
Right.
The places that you and I were, there's twenty people in that department, so there's somebody that has the time to read that engineering report and. Look at the stormwater and go look up something. That's just not realistic for us, that's how.
Point taken. But Jared doesn't sleep.
And now he really.
It's a good point.
Taking into account the character of Carbondale.
Right.
And the size of the government and. How do we, the the intention of looking at this code, right, is to make it easier to apply the code. For the planning staff and for. Designers and builders, so that when, when we are designing a home with an architect. And talking about constructability and budgets and things like that. We, it should be on us, right, to look at the code and make sure that we're presenting. An application that meets the code, that's the goal. So that it's less work for. The town, so I feel like when we're looking at it in that light, how do we? Capture simplicity, capture what what the character of Carbondale is. We keep talking about how we need more housing. And how do we, how how does, how do we make sure that we are allowing for? The right kind of development in Carbondale to accommodate. Those goals. And it's just impervious, you know, it's just one part of the code, but. I think it's really important to consider. All of those things and go back to that, we can get caught up in. You know, what are, what pavers are we going to use? And that just isn't realistic in this. Town right now.
Coming up from that, that granularity. You're, you had, you made a nice comment about the character of our town, our community. This is a highly creative. A highly. Fiery community. I feel like, you know, on average, I appreciate how often people in Carbondale want to. Take the time to figure out something new and just using, do things in a different way. And put the energies into that. And I wondered to Bob's comment, how often staff is going to, you know. How do we respectfully take care of staff and allow for that creativity? And technological advancements, which is really what that's happened, it was what that's, is driving that. All at the same time. So I guess, Jared, can you come back into this conversation? Speaking from like a staff role of what feels safe from you, in from your seat. That's it all, right? You, you know.
You, you know, with, yeah. A couple of things, so first and foremost, I want to do a quick time check on where we're at. Um, so I can give you a few quick thoughts, but I think, you know. As I suspected, this is a larger conversation. I didn't think we'd get through it tonight, so um. You know, it may be worth. Moving this conversation to a future meeting, um, but. You know, I think there, there's two things and and what I try to focus in on is the simplicity of applying the regulations. And what I've seen is. These exemptions in particular. Make it. Challenging for both sides and 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 really bring forth a lot of confusion. Um, you know, I threw out the roof overhang situation. I'm by no means married to that and um, that can. We, we could say outside wall and if you wanna build a. Roof overhang that covers half your lot, then go for it.
Depend on what's under the roof.
It, it, so yes, we could, and so I think we could add some simplicity, but I think, you know, I also go back to lot coverage. In Carbondale's code provides an important. Aspect that really speaks to that, what is the development character and what is the community character looking like? And if you. Abolish it completely or open it up completely. You're gonna start to create situations where you can have structures going setback to setback. The vast majority of the depth of their property and have very little open space. Green space, outdoor space, separation between units, and I don't know if that's. The character of what Carbondale wants, and so I, I think there's kind of the competing interests of the. Large lots, larger home, RVR style development and. The downtown kind of smaller lot development and, you know, maybe you could put the. The, the neighborhoods west of one thirty-three into more of that RVR style where it's more of that. For lack of better terms. Suburban style. Development pattern and so, you know, I, I think it could be um. It could be worth if, if we. Get rid of certain areas that say we're getting rid of exemptions, we're getting rid of calculating. Parking and driveways and stuff like that as impervious, I think it would be worth reconsidering the. Lot coverage maximums that exist and maybe scaling those back down slightly. If we're saying we just wanna get rid of exemptions because. For ease of application, maybe we look at. Hey, some of these smaller lots that can handle it, maybe those, maybe those lot coverages. Tick up just slightly, a few percentage points, and maybe some of the large lots don't change at all. And so I think that's something that we can do. But I do think there's. This staff, I'm sure future staff would appreciate a more simplistic way of saying this is what. Lot coverage is um, structures. You know, I, I will throw out there one last thing. At the end of the day, we've reviewed these plans, they get built. Somebody wants to remodel, update, somebody else buys, it has some different opinion of it. And so they have a gravel drive that they go and pave. They have an impervious. Or they have a pervious paving system that they rip out and. Put asphalt down there or concrete down there, and then someone down the road comes in and says, well, we want to. Put a small addition. We run the numbers and all of a sudden their home is, or their property is twenty percent over the maximum lot coverage. And so it's, well, you can't do anything unless you rip all of this other stuff out and and so. You know, I think some of these exemptions and some of these permeable pavers kind of. Put you in that quagmire down the road, so um. Just some thoughts, I think it's maybe worth. Maybe we can, we can provide a few different options um, at a future meeting and continue the conversation.
Um, yes, and out of respect for time, thank you for bringing awareness back to that. Some of us is like, you know, outdoors design and stuff. Uh, okay, um, any closing comments uh, from the commission on this before we move on? Parting shots.
We just leave this where it's at and where do we?
We will continue this. And and Jared, can you help me here? How do we, um, can we just, um, how do we close up this portion?
Yep, so I would ask for a motion and um, it's on page nineteen of the packet um, with. Respect to some of the other um, happenings that we'll talk about here in a little bit. And the email you guys all got with staffing changes, I would respectfully request that we look at the sep- second meeting and set, nope. I won't be here. Let's keep it on the first meeting in September.
I move to continue the public hearing to September fourteenth. For amendments to UDC related to impervious lot coverage and section three point eight point five.
Tape on that one. Great. Moving on to.
Could we maybe do a five minute break?
Yeah.
And then reconvene?
Are we gonna mute ours?
Swim it out, Kay.
What you doing? Can I talk to this member of the public? Okay. I don't wanna get in trouble. Oh, I remember that. Oh, yeah, casual Fridays. Woo, and then Colorado's casual, all casual all the time. Yeah, and then Carbondale's. Come in your sweats. Wear your fatigues to a P and C meeting. That was a weather component. The thunder. You know, it wasn't, but I've heard a lot about it. This is me.
Okay, we are back and moving into our next, our. Agenda item, which is the work session for accessory dwelling units, code and text amendments. So with this, uh, again, to start um. Open to public comments, so if anyone is here, has, has comments to make or input to share on this, this is an open dialogue uh, this evening, so. Um, welcome to come up to the mic and.
I don't, yeah, I guess I could do that first, huh? You can tell him, sorry Jared, didn't give you your time.
Anybody, please open us up. So um, I'll, I'll try to make this brief and in, in light of where we're at, but um. One of the outcomes of the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan was to look at ADUs. Um, it was listed a few different places as well as a lot of the future land uses. Um, discuss kind of a desire and a need to have ADUs or encourage ADUs and so um, with that. We talked about that, we talked about ADU regulations this spring, so let's get it on the work plan. Here we are. On August fifteenth, the trustees um. Held a work session to discuss AD, ADU regulations and their kind of goal was to. Set some maybe overarching goals, have some things that should be looked at. Within this process um, and provide some. Um, guidance on things that they're willing to, to look at, but they didn't wanna prejudge any. Specific outcome, so some of the items that they kind of brought up were. Have an overarching goal of expanding opportunities to add ADUs. Um, provide a more streamlined process. Review if there's a need for conditional uses or special use permits. Um, and discuss what value that brings to the process. Review parking requirements, um, are, is the current requirement needed? Could it be reduced? Could it be eliminated for ADUs? Ensure that we have a process that has an adequate response to structures of merit and historic preservation. Consider allowing um, different sizes and types of ADUs. Whether that's ADA compliant units, studios, multiple bedroom ADUs, tiny home ADUs. And then um, consider. Allowing attached and detached units throughout town, so um. I provided a number of pages of dialogue. I won't read it all to you, but essentially we have two pots. We have straight zone districts and PUDs. Straight zone districts are governed by the UDC. And so as we make changes to the UDC, those districts. By and large are impacted by those regulations. PUDs. As you can see in the packet, we provided a list of every PUD the town has. And we started a spreadsheet that tries to provide guidance on whether a ADU is allowed or not allowed. Um, those PUDs. By and large will not be affected by whatever we do with the UDC. I say by and large because each PUD is an individual zoning. And depending on how that PUD is written and how those. Um, definitions of dwelling units and allowed uses are, are specified. Um, there could or could not be impacts on ADUs. As I put in the staff report. We have a very specific development review process for ADUs. They require a minor site plan, which is a notice public hearing before the planning and zoning commission. In addition, where ADUs are required or where ADUs are permitted in residential. Districts, either a conditional use permit or a special use permit is required. That process doesn't include any additional review time. But it does require an additional application fee, response to additional criteria, so there is a little. Bit of additional work, it just doesn't elongate the timeline of the development review process. So as I put in here, because it's a notice public hearing, um. The requirement to notice in the so per sun. Pretty much adds three to four weeks. To the review process for any application. Someone comes in, we do a completeness review, we look at it. Once we notice it, we pretty much have a three week to four week timeline before it can get before you guys. Section four dot four dot four A. Of the um, UDC. Overviews standards for accessory dwelling units. Um, and just real briefly, they, in summary, they state only one ADU is permitted per property. ADUs are prohibited for multifamily or live-work units. Um, ADUs shall have a separate entrance, contain cooking, sleeping and sanitary facilities. But shall not have more than one bedroom. Um, ADUs are not permitted to have a separate ownership or utilities. And ADU sizes can range from three hundred square feet to eight hundred and fifty square feet depending on. The size of the primary dwelling unit, the zone district, the size of the lot. Um, and then lastly, ADUs are permitted to be attached or detached. With the exception of the OTR zone district. Where um, it's only allowed to be detached. If the primary dwelling is a structure of historical significance. Um, in addition, we have section five dot nine dot three dot A, which outlines the parking requirements. Briefly, ADUs require two parking spaces per ADU. But that number can be reduced to one space if the owner can demonstrate. That adequate space exists on the property to add an additional parking space. If complaints are received about parking. Um, and then I also included in the staff report, the definition of an accessory dwelling unit. That's just one of the many definitions of dwelling unit um, in the code. Um, I did include some of those in, in all those definitions in um, the attachments, but. Combination of all the definite definitions of dwelling help lead to the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, so. If it doesn't fit in this exact box that you see on page seventy-two of the staff or of the packet. Would look at the other definitions of dwelling unit and see how those could or could. Would look at the other definitions of dwelling unit and see how those could or couldn't affect this to determine if something's an accessory dwelling unit or not. Um. One item that I know we talked about here, um, is and and with the trustees was Senate Bill twenty-three two thirteen that wasn't passed. By the Senate, um. I do expect that there'll be some future conversation at the state level regarding housing. I don't know what it would be, but one of the aspects of that bill that would have had. Um. Pretty be pretty applicable to Carbondale was the ADU preemption. And it basically stated that, um, ADs are permitted as a use by right anywhere that a single family detached dwelling unit is permitted. Um, and so that would have. Um, done a couple of things. It would have prohibited local jurisdictions from applying any non-objective standard. Um. But it also would have. Um, prohibited the requirement of off-street parking. In addition, that preemption would have preempted any local PUDs or private covenants. That restrict ADs. And so, um, that could have been a tool that would have assisted Carbondale in. Making ADs more broadly. Um. Permitted throughout town, but we did. Um, ultimately not support it as a community, given. A lot of the concerns with the bill, but with ADs in particular, the lack of ability to have any local control. Regarding design compatibility, consideration of historic structures, stuff like that. Yes.
Uh. Just for, um, can you help me understand? So the impact on PUDs and covenants like. How would, how could this bill have impacted those standing regulations? Would it have overruled them?
Yes, yes. I don't know the, because I don't work in the state level, but it would have just said. ADs are permitted. You cannot. You cannot have.
Sue it.
Private. Restrictions or private agreements that don't allow them.
Wow, so even, uh.
Free for.
Yeah, HOA.
Yeah.
HOA is, yeah.
So.
It.
Every covenant, every need restriction.
Related to AD would have been.
Yeah, 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 sorry, yeah, not to get crazy, but correct. Thank you. Sorry to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine. Um, and then. We looked at our current code, and so some of the things that we've heard. Since I've been here is, um. The maximum size of an ADU hasn't. Necessarily been of restriction for applicants. Most people. Feel that they can get an ADU within that maximum size. We haven't heard people complain about that. With the exception of the few times where we've had to review an ADA compliant ADU.
Hmm.
Um. We have heard comments, the notice public hearing. Does increase the review time for ADs, and that's kind of a detriment to moving forward with these. Um. You know, we we don't receive a lot of inquiries about adding an ADU. Um, so as was discussed at the trustees, even if we change our ADU regulations, I don't think we're going to see some. Mad rush for ADs unless. We deal with the PUD and private covenant side of things, but I think there's other factors with ADs that are kind of. Restricting them, whether it's people want, don't want to have someone else living on their property. They don't want to. Deal with being a landlord. They don't have the space, don't. You know, don't have the funds to build an AD. I think those are some of the more. Bigger factors, um. So in in a lot of cases, and I'm sure. The architects and builders here know this, um, in a lot of cases, we have properties who construct a room with a wet bar. Or. A, uh. A second master suite with. Conveniently located, uh, cabinets. And a outside deck that just happens to have a stairs down to. The outdoor. And so we we see a lot of situations like that where. We have. Portions of properties that are essentially serving as an ADU. But they're not an ADU because they can't meet the requirements. What that leads to a lot is illegal construction after building permits been closed out. Running new gas lines or two twenties, adding, um, hot plates, things like that, that. Um. Probably for the overall safety of the community would be better if it was just a permitted. Unit than than that kind of. Unpermitted building permit. And then, um. You know, one thing that I've seen when I've looked back at some of the ADU reviews at the P and Z is, um. It seems like there's been some improvement in design with architectural and site compatibility. But it seems like a lot of the times the planning zoning commission's focus is. Really on the parking aspect of it. Um, and so I think it really just raises the. The question of, you know, in your guys' experience reviewing these, what what? Value do you see the the public process before the planning zoning commission bringing to make sure that, um. That's kind of brought forward. And so. Really, the intent of this is to solicit some initial feedback. From three groups, the trustees, the planning commission and the historic preservation commission. Get some guidance, get some direction on what we should be looking at. Um, and then we as staff can kind of go back similar to what you saw with the lot coverage, try to work on some options, work on some potential code language. Um, bring it back at a public hearing and have some additional dialogue. With, again, the planning commission, the historic preservation commission, the board of trustees and work on. Code language modifications. So, um, I did include on page seventy-three some potential questions. You don't have to go through them all, but if. You guys couldn't find things to talk about, I figured I'd throw at least a few things out to help guide or prod the conversation. And then, um, again. We just want some feedback. We don't need a motion. Love to hear what the public has to say about this and. Just try to. Hear. So that's really all I have.
Thanks for the intro, Jared. Um, so with that now, is the public informed enough to? Feel ready to share?
I've knew it all anyways.
This is Bob Cholts. This is what I really came to talk about. So I want to clarify my. Uh, comments. I'd really come to talk about impervious surface, but. One, I wasn't trying to argue that driveways aren't. Impervious. I believe they are, and I believe John Plano was correct when he changed that. Um. And second. I was reading the impervious part while I was getting my oil change today on my phone, and I totally misunderstood. Your proposal about decks. And so I apologize. I, yeah, I I agree with what you were saying. I would. Change the definition of decks. That it has to be open to the sky, because otherwise you get that situation with the big deck and instead of doing flagstone, we'll just put in. Uh, tracks with a gap and and we'll qualify for. Anyway. Great. Uh, there's a rich history to ADs, and it's a pretty popular idea now, but it wasn't in Carbondale for. A while. There was one on, uh. Euclid and one on Sopris that were built. Within a few years of each other, and there would be a lot of people here that were. Uh, against ADs. And so the things that you see in the code. Today are reflective of those. Conversations that took place ten to fifteen years ago when ADs were relatively new idea. I think the idea has become more embraced now than it was then. So I think you're wise to be revisiting the, uh. The piece of ADUs, because I think. Uh, there's a lot less consternation about them than there was, uh, at that point in time. But I do think those guidelines have served. The community well in terms of. Trying to make it so that people. Didn't feel like things were getting out of control. The other part of it is that, uh, in one of the. Colorado draft texts for those laws and and in some other places, they. Say ADU, but they mean additional dwelling unit. And in in essence, you have the right to build a second home on the same property. And I think it's important to people in Carbondale that we can. Continue to make it accessory. So there's a primary home, and we know that's the primary home, and there is an accessory use that is scaled and has a relationship to that primary use. That you know it's accessory. It's not, uh, what I should be looking at as the main point of the the property. I think, uh. The wisdom of. Of. Uh, discouraging PUDs. This is an example that changes to this of why the town was wise to. Uh, try and move away from the transactional zoning of PUDs and and put things in because you can change. Based on the reality of today, instead of a PUD that creates its own zone district forever. Uh, my. Hobby horses on this topic are, I think one space is, uh, adequate. I think the two space. I think there was a good reason for the two space thing at that moment in time because of what was going on around ADs, and I think that time has. Has, uh, largely come and gone, and, uh, I think we could do. Okay with one. I've never quite understood the eight hundred and fifty square foot part. I think the sweet spot for an accessory. Building is between five and six hundred square feet. Uh, you can make a nice one-bedroom unit in five and six hundred square feet. And, uh, so that the eight fifty to me is just telling somebody build an unpermitted two-bedroom unit. Uh, if you want two-bedroom units, then that's a different discussion, but up to now, the idea has been that accessory. Meant that it would be a one-bedroom unit or a studio. I think the, one of the things that works well on the ADU are the graphics that show site placement. And I think there would be the opportunity of. Uh, creating some of those templates for attached and detached units. To tell people where the expectation. Of that garage with an ADU over it or that, uh, that attached unit. Would work really well. And if you want to do something different than that. Then you're probably going to have to have a con- conversation about why that's a better idea and maintain how it's accessory to the main house. And then finally, I think, uh, an administrative review process that gives, uh, public notice. Um. It. You have still have to do the noticing that you would do, only. It gives Jared's phone number.
Good.
Yeah. And, uh, it gives the neighbors a chance and it give and we can give him the right that if it looks like. This is going to snowball. We can call it up to a P and Z hearing. And but if it, you let the neighbors know, nobody, if, so it encourages somebody to go to their neighbors and say, hey, here's what I'm planning on doing. Anything about this bug you? And if so, you got a chance during the schematic design process to make a few changes. And then when you come forward with something. If then, if they get a notice in the mail. And they say, yeah, I already knew about that. I'm not worried about it. Then it is a decision for Jared. If he gets twenty phone calls, he says, oh, well. We're going to have to have a P and Z hearing on this one. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Buck. Any other comments?
You can go.
No, you go.
All right.
I'm John Williams from. Sopris Avenue. Uh, I've been a Valley resident for since seventy-nine. Um, I've been gone for quite a while. Uh, for family reasons and came back in seventeen and I built a, um, shop. And, um. An accessory dwelling unit in my backyard. Um, well, with the plans to make in an ADU. Uh, when I retired and I'm retired and I'm ready to make an AD use, I'm kind of giving you a full disclosure of. Why I'm up here. Um, and I've been talking to a lot of my neighbors and, um, I believe there's kind of. There are quite a few people that would like to do ADs, but it's kind of so restrictive now that, uh, they're not doing it. Um, and. I'm basically dealing with only Old Town Residential, because that's where I live. Um, and I think Old Town. Regulation should be, uh, we're we're basically all single-family. Residents there, and we should be on an equal footing with the other. Uh, single-family zone districts, whereas, uh, the current, uh, UDC is not. Uh, we we got a lot more restrictions to it. Is such as the impervious surfaces aren't equal, um. Uh, we're not able to build a detached, um, ADU. Uh, it has to be attached unless it's, uh, built before nineteen twenty-five. Uh, structure merits are defined as, uh, fifty years or older, um. And, um, so I built a detached apartment because, uh, or building because it was my shop at first. And, um, my, you know, I make too much noise from to be attached to my wife, my wife's happiness. And also, once we retire, we didn't really want someone living that close. So it's on the lot. We're we're within all the restrictions of of everything, but, um. That's, um, I I like to see detached be removed from OTR and basically make all the UDC. Restrictions equal to the other single-family zone districts. Um. The size, the minimum size basically to me, um. Could be lowered quite a bit. Three hundred is, um, back when I was single, I lived in stuff that was a lot smaller than than that. And and it was perfectly fine. It was quite comfortable and, uh, uh, do kind of. Looking at our, um, future growth, this population. We're going to be having a lot of single people coming in and they can use a lot of smaller buildings. And if we had a smaller regulations, we'd be more people would be able to do that. Tiny homes, you know, that's a whole nother subject, but you know, that might be a a definite. Uh, possibility to it, uh, to be able to allow those. Uh, my whole deal is. Everybody would have to fit in with the regulations that we set. Um, so that everybody's on the same page, um, but make it a lot easier for for homeowners to do it, to be able to do that. Um. One other point, I'm trying to remember what it was.
Good.
Um. Um. Hmm. So the size should, you know, a bigger one, you know, over eight eight hundred and fifty that, you know, Bob has a good point there. But, um, eight fifty is good. Uh, it could be a little bigger, um. Um. The impervious, uh, uh, the impervious surfaces, um, when Plano was here, um. Because of my lot size, it's a, um, uh, three, uh, original town, uh, town sites. Um, and I wanted to kind of maximize the biggest footprint I could get. And so plus I wanted to maximize my parking, so I did a lot of. Um, uh, the poorest parking paver kind of thing. And it was very easy to do. It was a little pricey, but not really that bad. Um, so I got like four parking spaces available. Um, I think that would be a really good thing. I would, I would encourage keeping the parking off-street parking regulations, because we already have. Um, a a pretty serious on-street parking problem. Where I am and, um, um, you know, down Eighth Street, it's the, so it's all over the town, uh, was the parking issue. So, um. I think people need to be able to do a porous parking lot and still keep, um. Within their impervious surface amount for, um, that zone district, uh, which OTR actually could be increased a little bit. I think we're at forty-three percent. Of the zone of our, uh, total lot size. But, um, being able to. Um, do a lot of off-street parking, I think, is a is a good thing to do, um. And. Oh, the, uh, special use permit. Um, OTR is the only one that that, uh, it requires a special use for permit to do an ADU. All the rest of them are conditional. Um. Personally, I think, um, along with it, uh, with the police, uh. Um, um, the officer, uh, uh. Rules of of, they don't really. Investigate complaints until there's a complaint to it. Um, I think it just, uh, uh, the special use permit just basically creates, uh, neighborly. Um. Disagreements. I don't really see why a neighbor of mine. Um. Um, should actually, um. Um, have the right to tell me, complain about what I'm doing with my with my lot. Using my land the way I want, as long as I'm within all the. Regulations and fitting into all the rest of the codes that we have. So asking a neighbor's permission. So asking a neighbor's permission to do it, um, just doesn't work, I don't think. It creates uh, neighborly hassles. Um, and um, I don't like that. So, um, there you have it. Um, I'm sure you guys are gonna be seeing a lot of me around here for a while. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
I just have one question. And I, I'm not educated on this, but uh, local people living in these ADUs, is there any way to help that, that it's not people renting it out or Airbnb or, you know, I just, I don't know. Just as you're shifting things like, shouldn't it be for teachers? Shouldn't it be for new home, people working in the community? If possible.
Not seeing anyone else ring to the mic. I'll take a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Cindy gets the second. Alright. What say you, Commission?
Well, I think Cindy's point, I don't know if the board discussed that, but restriction of use of accessory dwelling unit is something that deserves a lot of conversation so that town doesn't end up full of small boutique hotels. I'm sure it's being discussed, the board, I just haven't been paying attention.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
Should, should ADUs be prohibited from being used as a short-term rentals to insuring house for local, housing for local residents?
There you go. Thanks, Jared. Super interested in the conversation. It feels like it's inevitable that we're gonna see some change, so we should be smart about it.
I think, I think having a minimum size seems silly. I don't know if silly is the right word, but um.
I guess what would be?
It meets code, like building code. And you can fit it into two hundred and thirty square feet. With the cost of construction, why wouldn't we encourage a studio ADU that can fit into that size if it meets building code?
Well. Why wouldn't we?
I agree.
I guess. I'm just trying to figure, just pay it as advocate on that, right? So I mean, the reasons would be that there would be some sort of basis or belief that it would be too small to accommodate the needs and the, uh, I guess the programmatic requirements and the health and safety of its inhabitant.
But doesn't code address that? Building code?
I think building code addresses less of a programmatic and more of a mechanical systems. And I'm, I'm just shooting from here.
Yeah. But you have to have certain, a certain amount of distance in your toilet, like from the wall and you have to have clearances to make sure that you can actually function in a space you can't.
Right.
So I just think it's, I think some of the things that deter people from putting ADUs in is cost. Um, cause the cost per square foot is very expensive. So, um, like when we built our house, we stayed away from RVR because there are minimum. You have to build a house of a certain size, which drove the cost of construction to a point where we, we couldn't do it. So if our, if the goal is to create local housing, we should try to make it more attainable.
So the only place where minimums are required is in the OTR currently?
No, minimums are required across the board.
It's two fifty, right?
Yeah. It's um,
Three hundred.
Three hundred in both. Um, let me pull this up. It's yeah, minimum three hundred.
Oh, I see.
Yep, three hundred to eight fifty. You could probably do-
Kind of wonders, is there a fear that like, if it gets too small, people's stuff will overflow?
Maybe, yeah.
We all tend to have a lot more stuff these days.
Bikes and-
Six bikes, five kayaks, you know, lots of inflatables. Is, is it like, is, is there that kind of
Yeah.
Psychology going into it, you know, where we can't, even in a three thousand square foot house, we have to have a, a storage unit? Not me, but just the proverbial concept. Um. I don't know, yeah, but I mean, minimum does seem like an interesting.
I mean, same should apply for the code for uh, ADUs bigger than eight fifty, like if the lot can accommodate it and we could have the flexibility for a two-bedroom ADU, I don't see why, if it's meeting all the other
Right. I mean, could you house it, could you house a family with one child or, you know? A teacher with two kids that can share a bedroom?
One bedroom units are certainly restrictive to who you're gonna, who you're gonna accommodate.
You know, over my time on tier on P and Z for four or five years, it's been, um, one of the things as I've sat here with you, Jeff, for so long is, and correct me, but it seems like a lot of the kinda comments that I remember hearing are an ADU goes off, you know, in a portion of the yard where a neighbor or two felt that there was, they had more space prior. And there was like, almost like an uh, they felt a little claustrophobic by that new construction. Is that fairness, is that a memory that you have had a little, you'd agree with a little bit?
Yeah, I think it's, that's been the tension between folks who want ADUs and the neighbors that might oppose it is that it's space, it's parking, it's busyness of, of the neighborhood.
Which is interesting, because I guess where my mind was going, the idea of not only an ADU, but perhaps a larger ADU, it sets into place a level of like sequencing or mobility through, you know, like maybe you start in an ADU, you're a small family, you're a single person, you're a teacher. You, you know, and, and it allows you to get a foothold where normally there wouldn't be one. And, and, and that foothold is also a beautiful thing in a small town. And it actually reinforces community in I think a really special way. So, and just, just again, just keeping us pretty informed, just tossing things out there.
I mean, as long as I've sat on P and Z, also we prioritized the concept of infill and ha- allowing Carbondale to accommodate infill, so we can protect what we all love outside of town.
Right.
I definitely think that uh, there should be regulations around short-term rentals and like if ADUs are allowed to be a short-term rental, because I think the idea, the intent, right? In allowing ADUs is to create more local housing, affordable housing. And that, that seems like an easy way to do it, right, to create employee housing for um, people out of college who wanna come in and work for an architecture firm or um, a teacher out of college who's single and uh, doesn't have two incomes. So it seems like we need to reserve that for that kind of housing.
Can I go back to your earlier comment, Jess? I think you're probably the best suited for this. The cost of an ADU, you said earlier was not cheap. Obviously, you know, we, we are, there's, you're still mobbing for quite a bit.
Yeah.
Well, for not quite a bit, quite a bit of mob for, for a glor- a glorified doghouse and so on. Um, you know, so I guess just playing into this for a second. I guess I, I have, I'm compassionate to the idea, especially in the current climate of, you know, the built environment, what the costs are like, that an ADU is not gonna be cheap.
Right.
And as much as we wanna provide affordable housing, I also don't want people to feel like they're going underwater. Now, like, is, is there an opportunity to, to let them leverage their, I mean, they're, they're, it's a gamble to build an ADU on some level. There's good, there's, you know.
For sure, yeah. I think, I think that it's less expensive to build an ADU in a basement. It's less expensive to go up over a garage. You're not, you don't have foundation costs, you don't have excavation costs, like it's always less expensive to build up or in a, in a building that already exists. Um. I mean, you save a lot of money that way. So I think there are ways to do it that makes sense financially. Where your intent really is to put your mother-in-law in there or um, an employee that works for a small business here in town or a teacher. Uh, I think there's ways to do it. And I think that we need to consider the cost of construction and, and I, I also see like, if you're gonna build an ADU, what are your costs and your return on investment and making sure that your costs are covered? And I could see how that would lead to somebody wanting to do a short-term rental because they have to cover the costs. So we have to balance that.
Cindy, Kim?
I know a lot about ADUs. We did, I was in the line computer that we were part of that, but ADUs and I'll find the best, you know, first houses, then ADUs. And then I have one in my apartment house. And I think they're, they're great and they've always been part of infill. And we've never had, I mean, our Lincoln one, the Lincoln PUD where everybody had an ADU. And we all had people in them, you know, long-term rentals or family or somebody, um. They were, they were kind of a new concept back then. I think that was in people at those houses or and there's, they're great for the community. People, there's always people that need to be at a place. Um, I know some of the, some people have that family in them still. Um, my ADU, my daughter is living in, so I think they, the more we can have them, the more there are in town, the better. We can accommodate people to be able to build them, use them, have people live in them or rent them. It's uh, I think it's a good thing. So it'll be a good discussion to go move forward with it.
I agree. I'm looking at the discussion guidelines we have and we're doing a pretty good job of um, covering all of those with the exception of, we haven't really talked about parking, the P-word. Um, and whether uh, the regulation should be modified to align with the parking requirement with the size of the unit. It's interesting. Um, I don't know that they should be required to have two spaces. I, I can think of a lot of situations where one is adequate, especially if you've got this little tiny three hundred square foot unit. And I also agree with um, what we heard earlier that uh, I don't think OTR should be singled out. I think it should be the same regulations as single family and um, attached or detached should be permitted, in my opinion, in OTR. I think, I think we shouldn't have it singled out.
Would the rest of your historic preservation homies?
I don't know. I'm very curious about that. I, I definitely am. I'm not quite sure, to tell you the truth.
Uh, it's, it's great to, it's great to hear you, that perspective come from you, knowing that you-
Considering the uh, maximum size of an ADU is bigger than my whole house. I'm like, I lived in an ADU. Seven hundred and eighty-two square feet. Yeah, maybe I could build a, a, a main, a main residence.
The backyard.
Yeah, exactly. You can't do a lot with a three thousand square foot lot. But you know, the good thing is I'm bringing the perspective of what do you do if you have this little tiny lot, you know? So.
Like historic structures or, or what is it, structures of merit should, could just have design guidelines associated.
Exactly. And, and I, I agree with that. Um.
And then with parking too, it just feels like parking should be relative to the size of the ADU.
At least.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If it's a small ADU or if it's a studio or one bedroom, I'm sure we can justify not, not requiring two spots, but if we wanna allow two-bedroom ADUs, we may also wanna um, consider requiring um, parking to accommodate the size of the ADU.
Yeah, makes sense.
Size and for, as far as maximums, I, I think I, I feel the same way. Like, I don't know why you would um, restrict the maximum size of an ADU if it fit on the lot and it complied with all of the other codes. And I think particularly about RVR. And if we're, if we're serious about increasing the density of town, we can't leave RVR out of the discussion. And they're gonna be, they, uh, maybe more than fifty percent of RVR residents will be resistant to allow ADUs across the board. Um, but there's a serious financial incentive involved too. I mean, there's, there's a lot of families in, in that neighborhood that um, would benefit. Having another small family like you're saying, Cindy, in, in the neighborhood.
Well, and if you're gonna put it above a garage.
Sure.
And a garage is seven hundred square feet. A lot of people have oversized garages and you can't build past six hundred. How do you even, you know, that, why wouldn't you maximize the space that you already have on the footprint of the garage? I don't know. I mean, I don't know anyone with an eight hundred and fifty square foot garage, but I know people with seven hundred square foot garages.
Totally agree. But it would just allow you to get a family in there too. There's not a lot of families living in eight hundred and fifty square feet. There's plenty, but. The administrative process or the review process is something we didn't touch on. Happy for staff recommendation on that too.
Yeah.
I, I'd really love to hear from your guys' past reviews if you feel like you've brought value to the design of an ADU.
There was one in particular, I don't know if it was considered an ADU on um, Went. Uh, Went and Sopers is a historic building. I forget the guy, the gentleman's name, but it was a, there were some really thoughtful design considerations for where an outside staircase was being placed, how it related to this, one of the older residences in town. Some of the design elements on the, on the roof line and whatnot. But other than that, I think our feedback has been about infill and where town is in conflict with covenants and what we, what we could, should, or are allowed um, to permit based on what a PUDs or HOA's covenants are. Which that, that was the only real hot water. I feel like we got, we could have gotten the town in, is going against some of those private covenants.
So do you think that that could be taken care of with an administrative review where Jared could say, I think this could be controversial or there's enough people calling me, where he can call it up for our review? And leave it up to staff to determine when that?
I mean, if there's not a private covenant at play, I think that it's way easier to go through an administrative review process. If there is a private covenant, a private covenant in play, I could see why staff would want the public to weigh in. Yeah.
Yes.
But they could probably make that judgment call. I, I don't know if we, if we felt comfortable across the board.
If you define it based on the fact that they're applying for an ADU or if you define it based on
Anything.
You know, if it is straight zoning or maybe all PUD, ADU, PUD applications go through a special use permit or a site plan review or whatever.
Quickly go boat, go back to the covenant piece though. Um, I remember our stance on that has been we don't get in, the town is not getting involved in those policies.
Yeah, but then we went ahead and approved an ADU against.
Wait, we can, we can approve it, we can approve them or deny them based on the code and based on the standards and the design review, but it's, it's up to the homeowner and their individual HOA, PUD review, whatever those covenants are that apply to their homes, that wouldn't, I'm not sure how that would get the town in hot water, I guess. H O A, P U D review, whatever those covenants are that apply to their homes, that wouldn't, I'm not sure how that would get the town in hot water, I guess. Um, we're just, we're just one review body of of many and it's that homeowner, you know, if I wanna put a shed in my backyard. I have to first ensure that I, you know, meet the town's, you know, criteria for that, but then I also have to go through the, kind of the. The design review of of my my H O A.
Yeah, you could flip it too, though, you might start with.
Totally, yeah, yeah, right. Either way, one, you know, the the. The H O A can't come back and be like, man, Jared, you really ruined that, you let us homeowner put a a shed in their backyard. I mean, it's kind of the the same thing.
I mean, we haven't seen it play out, I don't know what it would look like, but if there was a lawsuit in, what is it, Montevista neighborhood? I wouldn't be surprised if the town got questioned, I don't know, I don't know.
I I don't, I. Private covenants are weird. Um, and they are not all private covenants are created equal, so I think there's. A certain level of discretion in what the town would be willing to. Not enforce and what the town would not wanna get. Not not wanna take a position on one way or the other, um and so there'd be certain situations where you say, well, no, your private covenant says this, we're not gonna go against that. And there's other situations you say, well, we can, we can apply our our zoning, um I think with that being said. To Jeff's point, I don't think it, any of it's necessarily settled. Law and I don't know if Carbondale wants to be the entity um. Uh, paving that path. Ironically.
And 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 you're. Making me curious to look back at the, at the specific case to see.
So I think we've had what, three or four over the last few years?
Yeah, but there might have been a difference between if it was a P U D or just a defunct H O A.
There is definitely a defunct H O A we dealt with and we.
Sometimes there's both.
We basically ignored that.
Sometimes there's both, well, I mean, you can see the difference between if we went ahead and permitted uh A D U and R V R. Could be.
Pandemonium.
It would be pandemonium.
We will not because R V R has very specific A D U and caretaker unit requirements and we will abide by those. For the record.
Sometimes they're silent on it, right? Sometimes they don't say anything.
Well, thanks, thanks to Kay for putting it out, I have to review the whole matrix of P U D. Um, A D U regs. I can say I haven't got through it in detail.
I stopped right there, I got scared.
So I, you know, we, I think we got some good feedback from you guys um. This won't be the last time to provide input, think about it, you know, I I, it was interesting listening to you all, I think there's. One thing I'll bring up, not to kind of have more conversation, but um. Just as an example, the the trustees, when they talked about the um short term rental limitation said, well, hey, maybe. The ability for someone to own their home is because they can have that A D U. That's short term rented and they can afford to pay for it, and so why should we put restrictions on it? And that kind of flies in the face of. The goal of increasing housing opportunities is to provide more pathways for locals to live. And so having an A D U that's short term rented doesn't necessarily allow a local to. Have that, and so I think, you know, it's it's some of those conversations that we'll have, um that will be. Interesting to see where the town as a whole nets out on it, because I think there's value in in both sides um. But yeah, we can uh come back, like I said, we'll go to the Historic Preservation Commission, have a conversation with them. We'll ultimately come back sometime in the not so distant future um to ask this. Or to probably have another work session and potentially initiate a code text amendment um. But we'll see kind of where the rest of the feedback comes, so. Yeah.
Great. You mean to close this, we move on into a staff update?
Staff update, yeah, so as we put in there, on the September twenty eighth meeting, we'll be canceled. I will be at um the American Planning Association State Conference. Oh, it is in the lovely community of Colorado Springs. I am beyond excited. For some reason, they had a uh nice, like, close to decade period where they're only having them in the fall and. Mountain towns and now we're going to the Springs. So that will uh be canceled and part of the reason it'll be canceled is um, we also have had some staffing. Updates, as you guys all saw in your email, you may or may not have read, um Kelly has uh resigned from. The town of Carbondale, so she is no longer with the planning staff um. She provided you guys some some good reasons as to why she made the decision she made and we're certainly um. Sad to lose her, she was a huge asset, she uh picked up. The town quite quickly and our codes quite quickly and um was willing and able to take on some um. Complex applications and some slightly controversial or challenging applications, so um. Incredibly grateful for that and uh we're looking for new, a new planner, so if you know anybody. In the planning field or wants to transition to the planning field, let them know about the opportunity.
Did you guys post a job already?
We did, so it's up on our website, we're looking for either a planner one or planner two. Um, generally speaking, kind of newish to planning to. Slightly experienced, but um. It will will probably hold off on going to the more experienced planner realm, so um. Yeah, any kids that you know are graduating from planning school, architecture school, landscape school and. Wanna work for the government, this is a great opportunity. Do they sell that well? Other than that, staff updates, map Carbondale, um we are um. Finishing up the initial round of public input, um I think I told you guys, we got a ton of. Input on the online mapping tool as well as at the um physical map, so thanks to everybody who's been. A part of that and helped spread the word, um we have a um. A stakeholder working group meeting scheduled for, I forget the date, but sometime here in early September.
Twelfth.
Twelfth.
I think it is.
I think it is, yes.
I think it's the email from, what's his name?
Um, Matthew.
Matthew.
Downey.
Yes.
Yeah, so um both Nicholas and Jared will be representing the Planning Commission on that group. Um, and I think we have about eleven or so members from various boards, commissions, a couple of members from um. The business community are representing different aspects of the business community, Carbondale Arts. Um, we've worked hard to get a Latino representative, but we have um not been successful. Um, and but we have had a lot of um positive feedback from um. Latino businesses throughout town, helping spread the word, whether it's putting our flyers up. Um, or uh handing out the business cards with the Q R code. And we are getting some, um, we're working with Radio Tricolore to get some um. News or news, wow, radio ads. Put out there to kind of help raise awareness for it, so um we're trying our best, we're open to. Suggestions and connections and thoughts people might have, but um that project is moving forward. Trying to think, is there anything else in?
Art space.
Oh, art space. Yeah, Town Center, so that project, as you guys can see, is moving forward. Um, J V, D Susa and uh Building Seed have been, are the local architects. They've been doing a lot of public outreach um at a variety of the the. First Fridays and um. Other community events. Our town, One Table, they were there, yeah, so, so um they've been getting some feedback, so I encourage you guys, you can go to. Carbondale Connect and um follow that, sign up, um get your name on the mailing list if you want. Um, or just provide feedback, but yeah, that's moving forward. We're kicking around some some timelines, but it's seeming like there'll probably be some design charrettes through this fall. Um, and then looking at maybe doing some more. Design work and um. Shortly after the new year, and so, you know, we might have some more design concepts coming forward early in twenty twenty four. Um, with that.
You say design work, is it more like conceptual programmatic? Kind of urban plan design work or?
I think that might be a little sooner, I might, it might be a little more towards like early architectural. Design work in twenty twenty four, um they are trying to move. Somewhat expeditiously, um so that they can position the project to potential, to apply for. Lytech or Chaffa funds in uh early twenty twenty four, I think that deadline might be January or February. And so they have some certain milestones that they need to meet in order for that to happen, if the milestones don't get met. They basically miss out on a year of um. Applying for funding assistance, so um. I will share more information with you guys as I know more, um every time I talk about it, it seems like it's a. Ever moving target, but um yeah, what else am I? Missing? Oh, on that, I don't have the exact date, there will be a joint work session. With the trustees and the board of uh trustees. They're the same, with the trustees and the planning commission, I'll think and speak and all of that. In, I believe it, it's, it might be October. To kind of discuss um initial feedback that. This design group has kind of found, whether it's, you know, building height constraints, parking constraints. Um, residential on the first floor constraints, some of the stuff that I think we know are gonna be pinch points with any development in downtown. Um, and they just wanted to have an early work session with both groups to kind of understand. What might be worth pursuing um or not pursuing. And kind of understand where the community's appetite is on some of those conversations, so I will get you guys the date. Hopefully this week, if not early next week, um so you guys can get in your calendars, but it'd be great to have you all there. It will be on a Tuesday night um during the trustees' work session, so yeah. That's all I have, A and B, as you can see on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the fourteenth. So please let me know if you guys can or cannot attend, it'd be great to have a. That's all I have.
I do have an update that I'm actually really excited to share um. My firm, I'm honored to share, we got awarded the contract for Chacos Park.
Cool.
Um, and I would uh forth and men. Yeah, so um not perhaps as excited to some as uh Town Center. Those who like parks and open spaces might see it as a, it's a, it's a small heartbeat core zone of our community. Um, and I would love to invite all of you to. In informal or formal, whatever feels good session to kind of, given, you know, your passion already for our our town and our core. Would love to hear your, gather your input, um I'm very, very excited, but I actually think it's like a. A like a ripe, amazing place, and now that it's ours formally, minus three parking spaces.
Got rid of a few trees.
Mostly ours, yeah, um very, very excited to um, yeah, to dig in and to give that back to our town in a really meaningful way. So, wanted to extend the invitation to all of you and like, if any of you have a thoughts or passions to share, please. Let me know, let's go get some coffee or otherwise um.
There's a little house right down the block that could host beer and whatever, a conversation. Yeah, I'd love to.
So mistaken for an A D U at times.
You're going by, you miss it, you don't even know it's there. Yeah, I'd be happy to host a gathering if you guys wanna have the conversation there, or we could have it in the park.
That's fun, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we're putting together the Public Engagement Plan now, but we're pretty excited about that and uh. It'll be, it'll be, we're kicking off pretty quickly actually, and it'll be trying to get some idea before the. Budget process in November, just an early idea on what infrastructure might look like, it's the idea of what the park can or cannot hold um. But um, but yeah, that's coming, so I just wanted to share that, um so I think it's a, it's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like, I always see like a. A downtown is kind of a a facet, like it's, it's almost missing its its gemstone in some ways to me, so. Um, that's that's something that, looking forward to bringing a really exciting uh team, so. I'm sure.
Cool. Congratulations.
Look forward to it.
Exciting times, eh? With that, anybody else have any other exciting news to share or otherwise? A motion?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Someone just throws it out there.
Thank you.
So, two, two bedrooms, two parking spaces, one bedroom, one parking space.
Yeah, they seem to.
No.